Today is Wednesday, January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. It is six ten P M. This is an eight-member board appointed by the City of South Fulton's mayor and council to hold public hearings to make recommendations on rezoning use permits and concurrent variance application, comprehensive land use plan, maps, and amendments to zoning resolution. Citizens may speak for or against zoning issues, and each side will have up to ten minutes total to present its case. The planning commission's recommendations will be forwarded to the city's mayor and council for final decision on the fourth Tuesday of the next month. We will proceed with the agenda as staff need these call to vote.
Commissioner Hatton.
Present.
Commissioner Perry.
Present.
Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Walters. Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Devon. Commissioner Weatherly.
Present.
Madam, we have a problem.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, did everyone get a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the minutes be approved, the minutes be approved.
I'll say it.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. Ms. Parks, please, call the vote.
Commissioner Hatton.
Aye.
Commissioner Perry.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Walters. Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Devon. Commissioner Weatherly.
Aye.
Madam, we have all ayes.
Thank you. So the first item on the agenda is old business. It's a public hearing, U twenty-two dash zero one three, request to seek special use permit for the operation of a daycare facility to an existing place of worship. And with that, I'll pass it off to Director Hall before staff. Your peers, I assume, that's you, right?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission and the general public for the City of South Fulton. This item was deferred back in two thousand twenty-two, and we will quickly go through the presentation. But you will recall that this was a request to establish a daycare through a special use permit. Staff was willing to support the request, however, the applicant at the time was not willing to install a six-foot opaque fence, which is required development standard as outlined in the City of South Fulton zoning ordinance. So the proposed daycare is located at Cliftondale, United Methodist Church. Church has frontage along Stonewall Trail Road, and it is located in the Cliftondale Overlake District. The church previously operated the daycare, but has since stopped the operation. A new applicant has come forward to operate a daycare, and it's proposing the hours of nine A M. to one P M. And specifically related to the operations, there will be two classrooms, which are approximately four hundred and sixty square feet, and it will be located on the north area of Central Avenue. We don't have to necessarily go through the land use map or the zoning, which are not necessarily driven to this request. What we will do is we'll talk about, we will stop here and just show you where the proposed location is. And this was the area in red is in question where the applicant was going to have the children go out on days in which the weather was permitted them to go outside. And the question was, would they be willing to install a fence at the time that request was done? Since that time, the applicant has decided that she will, in fact, install a fence. And as a result of that, staff is now ready to make a recommendation of approval. So with that, staff has offered a recommendation of approval. There are some conditions that we have included. Next slide. Next slide. So I'll read the conditions, just as a matter of record. The applicant shall incorporate all required development standards for operating the daycare facility as outlined in the City of South Fulton zoning ordinance. Number two, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, that is for the actual daycare facility, the applicant shall apply for and be granted a business license. We will be including this particular condition in every project because we recently had a major development project that opened prior to receiving a business license. And so, so that everyone is aware that as you get your C O, that is not the end-all to for you to start operating the business. And then finally, adequate screening shall be enforced under such a property, considering the proposed use and surrounding uses. So that means that the applicant will be required to install a fence to protect and to make sure that the children are in an enclosed area when they go outside, whether they're going to be supervised. So with that, staff includes the presentation, and I believe the applicant should bring
So because it's old business, do I open the public hearing, or is it just?
It's deferred to the Assistant City Attorney.
Do we have, do we already have one?
We already had one, but it was deferred, so we'll do it again.
But then we, do we have the hearing before we decide to defer?
Yes. So Commissioners, this gets delivery. Okay. Would the applicant like to come out?
Maybe the applicant isn't here.
Okay, I was excited to see the applicant. Okay. Or Commissioners.
I think the only issue we had was the fence.
Was the fence, yes.
And so, now that the fence is part of it, I was thinking about it, maybe we're ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I'll go ahead.
Cool. I'll entertain a motion to approve, deny, or defer.
I move to recommend to approve case U two-two dash zero one three, the rezoning as outlined in staff report.
Commissioner Weatherly, I'll second that.
Properly moved and seconded. Ms. Parks, please, call the vote.
Commissioner Hatton.
Aye.
Commissioner Perry.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Walters. Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Devon. Commissioner Weatherly.
Aye.
Madam, we have all ayes.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to new business, and just a reminder that once we open the public hearing, there will be ten minutes for and ten minutes against each development. That includes the applicant's time in the fore time, just so that applicants are aware of that as well. And our first item of new business is a public hearing, Z twenty-two dash zero two-one, request to rezone from mixed use to limited commercial, and I'll pass it off to staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the commission here on public, under High Community Owen, Regulatory Affairs. This is a request to rezone a property that is currently zoned as mixed use. The request is to change the zoning to C one limited commercial. It is located in District One, and the purpose of the rezoning is to facilitate a commercial building of approximately ten thousand square feet on one point one three acres of land. The specific address is eleven eighty, U Torres Springs Road, and it is within the Cascade Quarter Overlay District. I should mention that there is an existing building that is currently project. As was mentioned, the site is currently zoned mixed use. This was part of a larger entitlement, and interestingly enough, a portion of that larger project was annexed into the City of Atlanta, and then this particular portion was annexed into the City of South Fulton, and this dates back to two thousand twenty-nine, when that occurred for the City of Atlanta. As was mentioned, there is a current building that occupies, the current, there's a building that occupies the site where the project is being proposed, and the development would enhance the general commercial activities along the Cascade Quarter as a more valuable project that was currently existing. For the future land use map, this area is designated as community that work. The current zoning, as was mentioned, is mixed. Next slide. And the applicant is proposing C one limited commercial. I'll just take a moment to explain that in our zoning ordinance, mixed-use zoning districts require not only commercial, some aspects of commercial, retail office in particular, but it also requires residential as a part of the development project. Because the area is small, the applicant is not proposing residential. Therefore, the applicant is requesting to change the zone. Next slide. This shows an area view of the area right off of Cascade Road and Torres Springs. If you're like me, you know this area very well because this is the busiest Starbucks, I think, in all of metro Atlanta. It's so busy, in fact, that I stopped going there. But this is the location of the project site. Next slide. So this illustration represents the site plan. It is your typical concrete building. The next slide, you'll see there are some different elevations that the applicant has proposed in a similar development. Let me go back to the site plan. There are a number of parking spaces that are required, fifty-one spaces. Right now, the applicant is proposing a general commercial use as they work out the tenant mix for the, for the project, creating the greatest flexibility in terms of trying to get the entitlement. Elevation slide. So this represents the, the proposed elevation. This is for a similar building that has, that has been constructed by the developer, and so this gives you an idea of what the elevations of the building is going to look like. Next slide. As it relates to the analysis of the project, as was mentioned, mixed-use zoning district requires construction of housing with any proposed used, commercial use. This is a little more than an acre, so it'll be a little bit challenging, a lot challenging, actually, to construct housing as a part of this project. And so, the applicant is just requesting a change of zone for a strict commercial use. Cascade Quarter Overlay District promotes design principles that, that encourage development and new development, redevelopment, to raise the level of community understanding and expectations for quality of the built environment, to protect and enhance the aesthetics and functional qualities, and to stimulate business and to promote economic development. So it's in that subject that the proposed project will do all of those things. The proposed rezoning to C one limited commercial, the intent of that is for neighborhood and community-oriented retail services to include transition and land uses which are complementary to a more intensive activity area. If you know the area on the, I don't know what side it is, but where the Publix is located in the shopping center, that is what we consider a more intensive activity area. So this would be a great transition as we get more into what is traditionally the residential area down in Torres Springs. And then, the proposed building is approximately ten thousand fifteen square feet. The applicant, as was mentioned, is proposing fifty-one parking spaces. The number falls within the required number of spaces for the residential area coordinates. There is a minimum line frontage of thirty-five feet, and of course, the maximum height for the building is no more than sixty feet, or four stories, whichever is greater. So with that, staff is offering a recommendation of approval subject to the, the conditions that I showed summarized. Shall conform substantially to the attached site plan prior to the issuance of the, of certificate of occupancy. The applicant shall, shall apply for and receive a business license for each business operating in the commercial development. The development shall comply with the development standards as outlined in Cascade Quarter Overlay District, and prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit plans which include details of exterior materials, colors, designs, and architectural elements for the proposed building. So with that, staff will conclude our presentation, and I believe the applicant for this project is here.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Harold Buckley. I'm with Wilson Brown in Irving, twenty-four thousand and Paces Ferry Road in Atlanta, and I am here before you this evening on behalf of Cascade Road, which is the applicant in this case. I'd like to back up and just fill in some of the, the spaces that Director Hall touched on earlier. This property, back in the mid-two thousands, was part of a ten-acre assembly. And in two thousand and nine, the Fulton County Board of Commissioners approved the rezoning that rezoned the entire ten acres for a single mixed-use development. And that mixed-use zoning was conditioned on a site plan for the entire ten acres. After that, some years after that, nine of those acres were annexed into the City of Atlanta and rezoned to something else, which did a couple of things to us. Number one, it left us with an orphaned remnant of a ten-acre site plan. So it is literally impossible for us to develop the property with anything because the only thing that's allowed is what's shown on that site plan. So this is one of those rare circumstances where the property owner can't do anything with that property but look at it and admire it. So that is, you know, the, one of the first, that's the first reason really why we're here. We're stuck, we can't do anything. The second reason is that we cannot accommodate a residential component along with our commercial component because the property is just not big enough. It's, it's one acre, and you have to have the commercial component, the residential component, plus the parking for both pieces on one acre of land. That's just impossible to do. And even if we tried to put the parking underneath somehow, we would exceed the maximum height, so we wouldn't be compliant with the zoning anyway. So that is why we're asking for the rezoning. And if you ask, why are we rezoning to C one? That's what the property was zoned before it became mixed use. So all we're asking you to do is to take it back to the zone that it had before it was rezoned for mixed use. Moving up a few years to two thousand eighteen, I actually came in with a rezoning application on this same property, and the application was to put a Burger King restaurant on it. And that proposal generated a significant amount of community opposition because they did not want to see a drive-through operation there. They thought that, you know, an auto-oriented use was not the most preferable option for the site, and they also were concerned about traffic. So for that reason, the city denied that application. That brings us to today. We are now back with a retail development proposal, no drive-through, which is consistent with the feedback that we got the first time. So for all of those reasons, we ask you to support our application. We have looked at the conditions that the planning staff has proposed, and we don't have any problem with any of them. So with that, I will reserve my remaining time for rebuttal.
Okay, thank you. Staff, do we have anyone speaking for or against this?
Yeah.
You do? Okay, in that case, I will go ahead and open the public hearing, and you'll first have those speaking for this development.
We have two, we have two minutes.
Hi. Good afternoon Commissioners, my name is Jimmy Kine Jr. I'm former City Councilman for the City of Stonecrest. The reason I'm here and supporting this particular development is because of my support for the developer. I've seen developers come to communities that is trouble a lot, and they build a little. And I can tell you firsthand that the City of Stonecrest was proud of the development that this, this developer did in our city, to the degree now that he's also is in the process of doing a second development. You all have to excuse me for this. I don't want to give you what I have, so that's why I'm recording this. But I would, I would certainly suggest, if you haven't had the opportunity, to look into some of the developments on two twelve in the City of Stonecrest, to take a look at that development. It's a very nice, very beautiful, very well-together development that the community is really proud of. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. What question?
Oh, sure.
What did you say the?
Oh.
Ms. Weatherly.
I'm sorry.
The city name was the City of Stonecrest Development was in District Five in our city. I was former City Councilman in the City of Stonecrest. This, that development was actually approved before the city was a city. So as you guys are a new city, as a new city, who's looking for great developments, and we found one with it. This particular development. Thank you.
Is anyone else speaking for?
And then we have one person for each.
Hello there, I'm at Lena Franklin, and I have worked with sisters, got me on some of his products. He went out of his way to show me what a good product he builds. He called me during the stages of the building. It looks good, it, what was there, he made it look better. I'm very proud of the work he does, he's doing, and he's doing another project in my own community, and I'm excited to see him make a difference in our community. He does a very good job. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, now we move on to against.
Yes, so we have three people for against. So for the against, they have two minutes to wait for against.
Yes.
Okay, so we have three people for first person, we have a minute and a month, you know what I'm saying?
Okay, just keep in mind, there's ten minutes for all of you, so just.
My name is Mark Ryan, and I actually am in the community, also in the Cascade Business Merchant Association, and I own a business in the community as well. So I'm there every day, and we're currently working on a larger plan, this is in the City of South Fulton. One of the plans, I'm against it because I think the site plan does not take into consideration of the businesses and the future development in that area. We have a golf driving range there, and then we also have the, some other businesses, like there's a flood plain there. And so presently, we're working on some plans for the City of Atlanta to develop the flood plain and the golf range improvements there. So it's a larger picture that's taking place. I definitely want some of the development, I think it's amazing, I think it's great. I just think that we have to play well together and sit down and look at the site plan. One of the things is interparcial connectivity off of Cascade Road and signage, from how we flow traffic there. Once again, the director said that Starbucks is probably one of the businesses in metro Atlanta, and that area has a lot of traffic concerns already there. So we want to make sure interparcial connectivity works, want to make sure it's a community we're looking at the site plan as a whole and sitting down. We've reached out to the applicant on several occasions to actually sit down and talk about the site plan. He's told us he does not care, he just wants to do his own business, and that's it, and that's not good community partners. And I once gave him a business on the day of residence there, so we'll make sure we get, we want to be community partners, not just sell to kiss our tails and go your way. And that's what we received, and I'm part of the Cascade Business Merchant Association. So we want to make sure that we be good partners, so the site plan does not work for all the development, development around. I think it should be very considered then.
Okay, next, we have Brian.
If I may, I'll refer Mr. Thomas.
Good evening, my name is Sam Thomas. Probably none of you don't know who I am. I've been in the community for, ever since there was nothing on Nerd Girls when I came. I retired from the military, and I was trying to figure out what could I do to address my life, and I decided that I would come up with a program to have kids go and all the other. And we were doing, impacted on about six hundred kids in the refunding their after-school program. Another thing that we did, made the festival, and I always felt that this side of town needed to have something similar to the other side of town. So for twenty-five years, I had a community festival with over thirty-five thousand people coming, but that would have had worse incidents. And I just want to let you know, I am really for the community. So the, the problem that I got is that, so one other thing, just to help the community for ten years, I told them maintain the mediums out there on Cascade. There was no cost at all to any government. I got the Home Depot to help me, and for ten years, we did the entire maintenance of all, all the mediums out there. The Burger King story is a nightmare for me because at seventy-five years old, I was ready to try to retire. So I tried to sell the property for two years, we worked on selling the property, and it got turned down because of traffic. And the traffic study that I saw, there was going to be ten calls per hour in addition to what was going on, so that was not acceptable. I think this program that we're doing now, it required more than ten calls an hour, and that was under ten calls an hour during peak time, so I was turned down, and I lost a million dollars, my retirement went away. So here, I'm sitting six years old, still working every day, just trying to survive. And I just want you all to know what this has done to me personally, and I've always tried to help this community. My main concern is I entered into a deal with Great Partners about six years ago to consolidate with Great Partners, to make the whole thing work for both of us. One of the things that probably needs really to go there is the connectivity between U Torres Springs and Great Partners. Right now, I can't even drive through my cousin. I built the road like that so that it would make it easy to get back forth to Drive Lane, and also to reduce traffic problems. I feel like that because people would find that return a little bit, car out of gas station, all of that, that was limited until now, I can't get through that anymore because I'm on the side, I'm the one to try to do it. Even though I tried, I really tried to make this work, like cutting grass, I was trying to build that out, and even when I was in that accident in hospital, I made sure that that grass got cut because I wanted to be a good neighbor. Didn't work. Didn't work. So my deal with Great Partners happened, and I think you all already know, or somebody mentioned that people dropped the code of traffic, that's what they told me, I wish I would have tonight, but I was told it was traffic. So I don't know. Basically, that's, that's all I have to say.
We have four more minutes remaining.
Four?
Yes.
Madam Chair, may I have a free, provide a visual aid because more of that help of understanding?
Madam Chair, members of the planning commission and staff, my name is Brian Cole. I work for the Atlantic Atlas Technical Consultants. Our office is located at twenty-four fifty Commerce Avenue, Suite one hundred, Duluth, Georgia. Atlas is representing and providing consultant services concerning transportation access engineer for Great Partners, who is currently, their office is located at thirty-six twenty in Mill Gate Drive, Atlanta, Georgia, three zero three, one one. They own property, as you see in the site map there, Great Partners, that's adjacent to this property. Great Partners has proposed the rezoning request by the applicant, that's currently proposed for multiple reasons, but mostly for the two primary reasons we're going to discuss, as it relates to traffic management congestion and interparcial connectivity. The current proposed driveway by the applicant, as we see in the site plan, is in the middle of the property. This can cause safety and traffic management issues for users using U Torres Springs Road to access the applicant's proposed property to be developed and those entering and exiting the businesses on the west side of U Torres Springs Road. That staff has indicated, as, you know, relates to all the congestion that's currently going on there now. The driveway access, you know, goes to, to like Murray Brothers Funeral Home, Starbucks, McDonald's, Publix, and all of those. We propose and support the relocation of the applicant's future driveway to the southern end of the property, which I indicated in that, that drawing, to, to give you just a quick visual, that what it does is it aligns more in line with the existing driveway access that we're discussing on the west side of U Torres Springs Road. So in essence, you're moving the proposed driveway as shown there, we propose moving it to the south to, to more aligned with the existing driveway on the west side. Then there's a matter of compliance with, we first in discussions of interparcial connectivity and the acquisition of ten acres, there was compliance with the development of regional impacts, the D R I number twenty-eight nine, that was, that occurred in all this at that time, that the property owner, in this case, the applicant and Great Partners, are to have interparcial access with each other at the southeast corner of the applicant's property. Again, as you see, Great Partners LLC, there was to be access, which in that, in essence, goes along the southern property line that was tying in. We propose tying in to the driveway on the west side, that it makes, it makes sense for interparcial connectivity, traffic management, safety for, for all that, that use it. Great Partners expressed the D R I decision to be carried out for this parcel and, for parcels through access back and forth. Great Partners has worked closely with the community and government officials and stakeholders for decades in this area relating to the Cascade Road viability and sustainability in an effort to promote positive growth, safety, and best management, traffic management practices. They embrace and support the community needs and desires for improvement along Cascade Road, including U Torres Springs Road. Therefore, this rezoning request.
Actually, I'm sorry, out of time.
To be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there are no more comments?
We had one more issue, so I was there. We have one more person, I'm Sam.
One more person against? We don't have any more time.
Just wanted to address some of the points that were made. Contrary to the experience that your first gentleman had, that he related to you, we have reached out to the Cascade Business Merchants Association. I personally talked on the phone with the president of that association and he and I are working to put us in front of them to show our site plan before this goes to the city council. The reason it's been delayed is because he said that he had a lot of things to get going on and so we couldn't get squeezed out in before this meeting. But we have reached out and initiated that dialogue. The second thing is about the larger plans for the area. The reason we are here today is that we're already victim of larger plans. We were part of a ten acre assemblage and then other nine acres left us. And as a result of that, we have been substantially damaged. Furthermore, we heard about how Great Partners is working on this community plan and how they wish to work with us on being a part of that. But the first time we heard anything about that was after they found out about our rezoning application. Nobody reached out to us, we didn't hear anything from any of them. So, you know, if you want to have a friend, you gotta be a friend, you know. And you can't just sit back and wait for somebody to come to you if you're doing something. We would have been happy to talk to them if they had approached us before our application came along. You heard about the old development of regional impact approval? That approval is void and no longer applicable because the zoning on which it was predicated no longer exists, except for on our little piece. And that little development right there is not the development of regional impact. So that is not something that applies in this situation. And finally, you know, this is fundamentally a question of fairness. This land has lain vacant for decades, you know, and it, there have been people who've been trying to do something with it, but who've been devastated by it. And they just really want to be given the opportunity to realize just a reasonable use of their property. And I can't think of a better way to do it because we heard from representatives from the city of Stonecrest, where this, this company has already done developments. And they are thrilled with what was built out in their community. And so it would be a real shame to let an opportunity like this go by because, you know, we're waiting for the larger plans to come together. And with that, again, we would ask for your support and I will take any questions that you might have.
With that, I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, if you raise your hand, I'll acknowledge you and we can ask questions to the applicant.
I got a question for staff. So, as is currently zoned with mixed use, I think you already stated the fact, but there's really no way for them to utilize it as is? Meaning they have to have residential commercial all in that same piece of land?
One of the things that I do as a director, I try not to dictate what developers should do with their land as it relates to the overall design. So technically, and since we were looking at the ordinance, they could go higher. Let's say they wanted to deal with their proposal, they could add an additional two stories to it and that could be residential. That might not be in their financial plan, this is a land use entitlement. So I don't look at the finances for the project, so I don't know what pencils I would afford the developer for his or her needs, but, you know, there are creative ways that you can develop the site. What we have before us is a one-story commercial development that will, based upon the needs of the tenant space, will be subdivided into commercial entities, which is what they're proposing. So, they were, the applicant was astute enough to know that they could not develop, I guess, from their financial model, any residential. So they were requesting to get out of the mixed use zoning district and just go strip commercial.
So, they were, the applicant was astute enough to know that they could not develop, I guess, from their financial model, any residential. So they were requesting to get out of the mixed use zoning district and just go strip commercial.
Another question, is that, are there any requirements for connectivity amongst the parcels adjacent to it?
Commissioner Hadley, that's probably a, that's gonna be, that's gonna be, my response to that question is gonna be, there is a proceeding, land use entitlement, this one that we discussed, when this larger parcel was developed back in two thousand nine or whenever it was developed. I am not as familiar because as you know, that was either unincorporated Fulton County or Atlanta. It was probably all unincorporated Fulton County. So there could be some specific development standards related to that particular rezoning effort that occurred. But once you rezone out of what was previously zoned, then those development standards fall away. Because now you have a new zoning district. So now those particular apartments fall into place. The, I would imagine, and I'm just speaking to you, using a little bit of common sense, I would imagine that it's gonna be difficult to enact an inner, what do we call it, inner parcel connectivity? Because individuals are responsible, they're responsible, they have liability for their piece of property. And if you began to create access points that connect different parcels with different owners, there could be the question of what happens in the, in the area where there is adjoining? Who is responsible and who's liable if someone gets hurt or something, something happens? So I don't know the enforceability of that, just because there is a great opportunity for undetermined liability if something should happen and it kind of just deadens the zone, if you will.
Anyone else have any questions for staff with the applicant?
I have a few questions. Um, what, I have a question for the applicant, thank you Director Hall. What businesses are you all thinking of? I mean, it just feels sort of vague right now. It's not a drive-through, so dine-in restaurants, would there be, you know, stores? Like what, how many businesses and what types of businesses are you looking at?
We don't know ultimately who will go into this facility because, you know, we don't know who is going to show interest. But our target is to have three tenant spaces. We would like to have a restaurant, a sit-down restaurant. We would like to have a retail store and we would like to have a professional office space as the three targeted uses. We do have Jerome Scott here, Chef Scott, who currently operates a restaurant in, one of the, one of the facilities in Stonecrest. And his business is one that we're looking at going in there. The difficulty is that this is a sort of chicken and egg problem. You can't go out and market to people and try to get them interested in your project if you don't have your development entitlements in hand. But it's also a hurdle to get your entitlements if you don't know who's ultimately going in. But those are the uses that we're going to target. And also to the question about being able to put the residential component, what we would have to do to put the residential component in here is to do a multi-story structure with the residential on top and then the commercial and then we would have to have parking, structured parking underneath because that, there's not enough room for a parking lot to provide all the parking that zoning requires. So not only would that be an excessively tall structure, but it certainly would not be financially viable because every parking space that you put into a parking deck costs twenty thousand dollars. So let me say that again, every single parking deck space that you put in a project costs twenty thousand dollars. On a project this small, it's just impossible.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, does anyone else have a question? There's no more discussion than I'll entertain a motion? To approve, deny, or decline?
Commissioner Hadley, I move to recommend to approve case Z twenty-two dash zero two one, to recognize as outlined in the staff report, to the resulting as outlined in the staff report.
Second?
I'll move to second it, this party's called the roll.
Commissioner Hadley?
Aye.
Commissioner Perry?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Walters? Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Devon? Commissioner Wetherly?
Aye.
Now we have all aye.
Thank you all so much.
Now we'll move on to item two, public hearing, Z two dash zero one three. Requesting to relocate from office and institutional zoning to M one light industrial and the staff will pass it off to Director Hall.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the commission, Derek Cole reporting on behalf of this next agenda, which I don't know what it means, if my intended. For the chair and commission, this, I think our project may look familiar. It was presented because the city needed to initiate a, a city-initiated land use change that was granted back in December by city council. But just for the purpose of introducing this project, I will cover the staff report. The request is to rezone property from office institutional zoning to light industrial M one, zoning district to construct a building, a new building of one hundred thirty-six thousand eighty square feet. It is a warehouse located on thirty-two point nine acres. This building doesn't have an address, so we call it the location along Fulton Industrial Boulevard, on the southern side of Fulton Industrial Boulevard. The applicant is also requesting concurrent variances to reduce rear yard setbacks from one hundred feet to fifty feet. And this is related to a couple of streams or a stream or so that creates an irregular shaped parcel for it to be developed and to allow outdoor storage in the front that will be screened. Next slide. By the way, a little bit of background information, this parcel was just annexed into the city in two thousand twenty-one. If you recall, all of what we know today to be the city of South Fulton wasn't the city of South Fulton. So Fulton Industrial Boulevard was that last piece of property that was annexed in two thousand twenty-one. The site is currently undeveloped and heavily wooded. As I mentioned earlier, the city initiated a comp plan, land use designation change. Because ironically, as we all know, most of Fulton Industrial to be heavily in light industrial. This particular land use was a two-part land use designation. Community... I can't remember where it was now. I'll have to go back and look. But it was not, it did, it would not support an industrial use. And so as a result of this, and then kind of looking at the general area, knowing that everything around it was, was, had a land use designation, industrial zone, except this car valve, we made a recommendation to comp, to planning commission and council to change it to be consistent with the area. So now the applicant is proposing to rezone it to light industrial zoning district. And as was mentioned, there are several industrial zone properties that exist to the immediate north, immediate northeast and west of the project site. So this shows the current future land use map. You will forgive me for my own illustration there, I tried to block out what the previous use were. But this has now been zoned, this is now, this now has a land use designation of industrial zone, not to be confused with the zoning district. Next slide. Current zoning is office institutional and community business. The proposed zoning is light industrial zoning district, M one. This illustration shows an air view of the area. The next slide shows the proposed site plan. I'll have the applicant, when the applicant comes forward, to kind of walk you through the site plan. But you do see a building that has access off Fulton Industrial Boulevard. And, you go back. And there is, as I mentioned, the building is a hundred thirty-eight thousand square feet. There is parking, but the building, because of the uniqueness of the parcel, had to be situated in such a way that could maximize the space without building within the compromised stream buffer area. And as a result of that, the applicant is also requesting a variance for, to encroach that area as well as to allow for outside storage in the front yard. Next slide. So far, I said a hundred thirty-eight thousand, a hundred thirty-six thousand square foot has fronted along Fulton Industrial Boulevard. The proposed zone change is M one, which is compatible now to the comprehensive planning designation of industrial zone. There are some environmental areas that require appropriate setbacks. So those are the stream buffers that we talked about. The applicant is requesting variances to reduce this development standard from one hundred feet to fifty feet for a stream buffer to allow storage in the front yard. And the shape in and of itself has an unusual concave, concave type shape that renders a large portion of the site unusable. Therefore, staff, in our interpretation, feel that we can generally support the request of the variances for these two purposes. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the project. Next slide. And I don't think we have conditions associated with this one, other than the standard conditions. But staff's recommendation is approval as outlined with the information contained in the analysis section of the staff report and the presentation. So with that, staff concludes our presentation and the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward? For the applicant, thank you. Well now, open the public hearings.
I speak for the application.
Exactly.
My name is Henry Baywood, I'm counsel for the application to position properties. I'm happy to update you all that this property has been given an address now, sixty-five fifty Fulton Industrial Boulevard. As Mr. Hall stated, this request is to rezone the property from office and institutional to M one light industrial. Purpose is to construct a building as shown on the site plan of a hundred thirty-six thousand eighty square feet, a warehouse on thirty-two point nine acres. As Mr. Hall stated earlier, before you all previously, we referred the application to allow time to have the comprehensive development, the comprehensive managed plans updated such that our request is consistent with that plan. The original, the original comprehensive plan designation was commercial center. It is now industrial, as Mr. Hall has stated. And I will, I will just go through very briefly some more items, some more about the, about the variance request. The first variance request is to reduce the rear yard setback from one hundred feet to fifty feet. The stream buffers, those strings is what causes the compactness of the site, which requires us to need to encroach further to the rear yard setback, but not the stream buffer, I just want to make sure that's, that's clear. And the other, the other variance request, which is properly advertised, is to allow for storage in the front, in the front yard. With that, I will ask that staff, ask that planning commission rather, approve this request, allowing the staff's recommendation. And I pass off the presentation to my applicant, to the, to my client, the applicant, where he will, who will give you all the rundown of the actual request, uh, through the PowerPoint presentation.
Good evening, I'm John, my name is Greg Bowden. I am the managing director for the eastern region of Bray's Logistics Properties. I have been the industrial acquisition and development ground for a little over twelve years. Essentially, my, my background, I've developed more than fifteen million square feet across around five different states, including Georgia. I'm here today with our regional development executive, Eddie. Yeah, we would develop pretty much the same amount of square footage and across essentially the east coast as well. We also have my civil engineer, Antonio Sample. We also have my civil engineer, Antonio Sample, who's with Ethel and Associates. He has, you know, over twelve years of civil engineering experience as well. But just a little bit about Bridge, Bridge Investment Group is a public company. Been around for a little bit, about four decades, and excuse me, I will pass these up to you guys. There we go. You guys have handouts for all. So Bridge Investment Group is a public firm, private equity, real estate firm. It's been around for about forty years. Bridge Logistics Properties is around two years old, but we are national. And so one of the regional offices are here in Atlanta. Just a little hot level about Fulton Industrial. For those that probably are not aware, Fulton Industrial is comprised of around fifty-five, almost sixty million square feet. That is the largest density of industrial in the east coast. Ninety-nine percent of that is leased, so a lot of it is, is not vacant. On average, the vintage, a lot of these buildings have been built in nineteen seventy-eight. So extremely old and obsolete from a functionality standpoint. As far as jobs that it supports is twenty-eight thousand plus jobs. And then payroll wise, about two point four billion dollars as well. So a very large economic impact, you know, not just for the city of Atlanta, but for the state, as well as South Fulton. As far as on the location aerial here, you can tell, here's the site. The site is aware geometry, kind of looks like a Pac-Man. And then you have essentially these two strings, so it makes it really tough to be able to get anything functional on there. But we are able to get around a hundred thirty-six thousand square feet there. The distance, the access is directly onto Fulton Industrial. So nothing is going on to Hamilton at all. As a matter of fact, the back of the site is pretty much around ten to twelve football fields away from the Campbell Road, so it's a pretty far distance. But it's going on to Fulton Industrial, very historic industrial corridor. Kind of moving on to the site plan. It's so, we kind of went through the high levels of, you know, essentially that's thirty-eight acres. The seller wants to hold on to five acres of it, that's on the other side of the creek here, which is right here in blue. And that will maintain the commercial use. His goal actually is to have more kind of like a restaurant, quick service, you know, which is great for a lot of the workers that are there. And so we're only, we're actually subdividing this and only rezoning thirty-two acres to be, to be clear. As far as our building itself, we're anticipating that it will be around, you know, thirty dock doors. We're looking at additional about thirty trailer parking spaces as well. That allows for any, there is any additional queuing that is needed from our tenants. They can do it all on-site, so there's not anything that's kind of going off into Fulton Industrial at all. And then this is a fairly small building, so the tenant size, I mean, essentially going to be anywhere from fifty to about a hundred thousand square feet. Office-wise, we're looking at anywhere from three to five thousand square feet of, of office. And jobs-wise, we're looking around like twenty-five to fifty jobs for this location. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the West Commerce, West Fulton Commerce Park. We are adjacent, next to it, is these five buildings that are here. As you drive by there, you can see really nice landscaping is a huge difference between kind of the rest of what you see along Fulton Industrial. Our goal is to continue that along there, as well as to extend, which we're, we're working with the Boulevard CID to be able to extend the market bus stops, you know, for our workers and for the tenants that's there also. And then making sure that we're applying our ESG measures, standards as far as sustainability, et cetera, to the property. So a lot of natural lighting, LED as, as well. So just kind of in summary, just kind of skipping to the end. You know, it's essentially, again, the five point six acres will remain commercial, built to a future retail developer. You know, the staff has, has supported this development as well. We're looking at around fifteen million dollars of capital investment, anticipating around fifty jobs. Tax revenue increase essentially is around nineteen X, so going from about eleven thousand to two hundred and ten thousand. Bridge Logistics, you know, development taxes will be contributed to the plans and improvements led by Fulton Industrial CID. So they're doing a lot of plans, a lot of great things that obviously have improved Fulton Industrial significantly, especially around safety, transportation, et cetera. But they need help, they need tax revenue. And so we're willing to pay additional taxes to be able to help those improvements. Then again, just existing natural tree and string buffers to insulate the project from the direct line of sight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Parks, is anyone here to speak for or?
Do you have anyone for? Um, you don't, okay, she says she's, she's for, but she don't want to.
Okay.
Do you have anyone against?
No one against?
No one against?
I will close the public hearing and the other commissioners.
Yeah, I got a question for applicant. When you speak about the stories in the front, what, what does that actually mean? Are we talking about literally like, you know?
You're just talking to the trailers itself.
So the trailers itself?
The trailers will be able to park in the, in the front, so.
So there won't be dock, there won't be docks in the front of the trailer? It's just literally just parks waiting to queue in?
Exactly, that's exactly.
Or they can let me visible from, uh?
They will not, because of, because of the trees that we're going to have along Fulton. Maintaining that landscape.
Anyone else have, ask some questions? Maybe I missed this, what is this warehouse for? What will be happening there?
Uh, so it's, it's a lighter industrial and.
So what exactly will be happening?
Yeah, I want to stand up before I finish. So it kind of goes back to the same thing on the commercial deal, right? It's kind of hard to say exactly what that tenant is without having the rezoning done. However, from a light industrial standpoint, typically the uses are light manufacturing or essentially distribution. That's one of the, one of the two. As we all know, pretty much everybody on the paper probably has Amazon run. And fortunately, that is part of the reason why we need more pressure closer to the population, so.
So it could be.
E-commerce is a major, I would say e-commerce is a major driver from a demand standpoint. But also light manufacturing, as we're starting to do more onshoring, kind of getting away from globalization and trying to manufacture more domestically. That has become more popular as well, so it could be.
Okay. And you said that there, it's not, there's no residential, but you said there will be some residence? Did you say that? No, nothing like that, okay. I thought you said something, that's, that's funny. Can you speak more about the ESG measures?
So from our standpoint, you know, typically what we always do is make sure that all of our buildings are be certified. So that essentially, actually, what I'll do is we, we have a professional here that can be able to kind of tap into that a lot more and give you a lot more details on the lead aspect.
I don't know about professionals, sorry, sorry, loose, loose translated word. Good evening commissioners, Eddie Stantbury and for Bridge Logistics Properties. To answer your question, Commissioner, ESG measures we take are all across the board. We will, we are designing building, our building to lean certified, so some of those measures direct, to directly answer your question. We're going to have a white, what's called TPO or reflective roof. We're going to locally source all materials possible, drought tolerant landscaping. Those are some of the items, without being able to speak specifically to, let's say, tenant construction, but more of the shell construction of the warehouse, so locally sourced, as I mentioned, drought tolerant landscaping and our white reflective roof, along with any kind of energy use reduction. So the minimum HVAC is needed, no additional carbon footprint other than what we're currently looking for.
Okay. I just have one more question, I'm not sure who it's for, but it's currently wooded, a lot, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Has there been any environmental impact study?
Yes. Yes, there has.
Old growth trees, I, I doubt there are, but I'm just saying that there.
It's a clean site, it's a clean site. So now there's no issues at all, so. Nothing hazardous would decide at all. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any question? Okay. No question.
And I had one more, one more thing. I don't think we shared as well, but we have gone to Sandtown Community Association twice. As of most recently, it was earlier this month as well. So from a leadership standpoint, as well as with the general public, so we have done a good amount of outreach. We just wanted to share that.
What was the response?
Uh, they had essentially the same questions you guys had, and we were able to address all of them. So from a leadership standpoint, they were just.
I will now undertake a motion to approve, deny, or defer.
Commissioner Hadley, I move to recommend to approve state case Z twenty-two dash zero one three slash C B twenty-two dash zero zero five. The resulting is outlined in the staff report. Second.
Okay, I will move to second, Ms. Parks, please, call the roll.
Commissioner Hadley.
Aye.
Commissioner Perry.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Walters. Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Devon. Commissioner Wetherly.
Aye.
Madam, we have our eyes.
Okay, thank you. All right, well with that, we'll move on to the discussion items. The streetlights presentation, and the rule, that's Director Holt.
Representative from the public works department.
That would be me.
Okay.
You don't have the PowerPoint?
No, sir.
I can put the computer over there.
That's fine, we can all, we can all like kind of crowd it.
It's only you all laughing, so.
We all just get up.
Your cheer. Yeah, this isn't your.
You call me Hallmark Keller, I can't. Seriously, I didn't hear that gentleman earlier, I was trying to ask him to repeat himself.
Oh, no.
I couldn't speak, so.
Oh, right, yeah.
Let's see what this is.
You did get me to do those, don't cry.
She repeated, yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think he saw them coming, yes.
Absolutely. Okay, so, me and my brother, I just wait.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Moussa Francois, and I'm the program manager for Public Works. And I'm here to sign to present.
Are we, is this, is this a public hearing?
No.
He's just doing a presentation. Okay, great.
We can relax, though.
Yeah, we can relax.
We're done with the public hearing.
And as you know, the city was incorporated in twenty seventeen, and for the first two years, the really the functions of Public Works, I mean, Fulton County was acting on behalf of, of Public Works to handle all the operations of Public Works. So at the, then late twenty eighteen, early twenty nineteen, when we transitioned over to the city, Fulton County took over all the accounts of the streetlights accounts to the city. And what happened is that we in Public Works, we didn't really have a good idea of, we didn't have number one, an inventory of how many lights out there in the city. But meanwhile, we were receiving a lot of bills from Georgia Power and, and Grayson. So what they decided to do in, in late twenty nineteen, in twenty, twenty twenty, is to put out a request for proposal to hire a consulting firm to, number one, do an inventory of all the streetlights, so that we know where all the streetlights are, that's number one. Number two, to assess the current condition, to, to see if maybe there's, there's a need to add streetlights where we don't have it, to, to, to enhance where, where existing streetlights. And the third one is, is where you guys all fit into this, is that, is to come up with a set of policies. Because when we transitioned to, to the city, we didn't have, until today, we don't have a set of policies that dictate how we should handle business. So it's really only case by case, eh, eh, a scenario. So what we decided to do is to hire a consulting firm, which is the S W, to do a, a, um, a master plan for us. And I was, now we are really in the final phase of the, of, of the plan, which is the recommendations. And it's my understanding that, as, as I said earlier, a good, a very important element of the plan is the policies that we have to put together. And it's, it's my understanding that before we can go before council, we have to grant it by you guys to.
Are you speaking specifically about light or just in general?
No, street lightings. Not the street li, not, not traffic lights, just streetlights. Yeah. And so the reason why, what I would like to do tonight is to give you an overview of the plan. What I would like to do as early as tomorrow morning is to send you a set, a copy of all the street pa, the streetlight policies, to give you guys two weeks to take a look at it and make any comments that, that you have. Then I will take that before, before the consultant. Now, based on the magnitude of the comments, based on the, whatever you guys asking for, there may be a need for me to come before you one more time with the consultant to answer the questions. But if the questions are not, are very preliminary, not, nothing big, then what we will do in Public Works, we will answer all those questions, put it in a report and send it before council so that they can see. So it's a, it's a little bit premature for me to tell you what the next step is. But one thing we know for sure, as early as tomorrow, you will get a copy of all, all the policies. You will take a look at it and see if you're comfortable with it. Next slide, please.
Yeah, I don't know about that.
Yeah, I, I don't know about that. Yeah, I, I will go through this real quick, and, and, and really, this is a very important slide. And as I said earlier, for example, what you're looking at this slide right now, what we did is we did a P O cities comparison of how much the sp, the cities in North Fulton and South Fulton are spending in streetlights eh, eh, every year. You guys will be surprised. For example, the city of Powder Springs in twenty twenty-two spent about three hundred thousand dollars in streetlights. This is just the consumption of the streetlights. Sandy Springs in twenty twenty-two spent about one point five million.
You said consumption, are you talking about power usage?
Power, we said, we said, and, and part of it is also maintenance. Because for example, with us, with the, with Grayson and Georgia Power, the city of South Fulton doesn't own the streetlights. As part of the agreement that we have, we provide if something goes wrong, they go, they fix it. Yes. First slide, please. In fact, that would be second, so yeah.
This is the consulting team that's.
Yes, and, and, and. Next slide, please, this. No, you won't move, yes, this is the one I discussed. And, and for example, the city of Atlanta in twenty twenty-one, about ten point five million dollars, that's. And for us in the city of South Fulton, one point four million dollars. So if you are in Public Works shoes and you are spending that kind of money, you want to make sure you have a good understanding of the inventories and for example, the current conditions, all the streets that needs to be lit, are we doing a good job? So we, once we do the inventory, we're going to do an assessment. And more importantly, in the future, are we meeting the needs of the future? And this is what in, in twenty twenty-one, next slide, please. And this is why in, in twenty twenty-one, next slide, please, we are, this consulting team to come up with, uh, a, a plan for us for, for streetlight. Next one, please. And again, as I said earlier, the, this is really the scope of the master plan. Number one, we want to have an, an existing inventory of all the lights. Number two, we, what also was important is that with the recommendation, we wanted the consultant to come up with the latest technology, LEDs or whatever will come in the future, because we want to make sure if we're going to invest money in infrastructure, that we are using the latest technology. And, and the last one, which is where you guys speak in all of this, the streetlight policy. Something that we can put in place for existing subdivisions, for example, how do we deal with existing one? New subdivisions and also current subdivisions that would like to enhance the, the, the streetlights. And where are we in terms of schedule? As I said earlier, we finished the existing, existing condition, which is the first one. That we completed the need assessment, we are correct in the draft recommendations, and our goal is, based on the conversation we're going to have, based on the feedback we're going to have, we going before council. The goal is we would like to go before council as soon as possible, next meeting or before this spring. Because the reason why is very important to us, because this project should have been completed six months ago, maybe seven months ago. And the reason why is because when we were like two thirds of the way, Fulton Industrial Boulevard became incorporated in the city. So we had to have a change order to incorporate this, so that delayed the project. Because we had to start all over again for Fulton Industry, we had to do an inventory, an assessment, and this, you can understand. So that really delayed the project. And as you can see right here, as part of the, as part of the, the, uh, the format, we had a stakeholder committee, and we also have the council. As you can see, we already went before the steering committee twice, and we went to the, before the public twice. We went before the council once, and our goal is to go before the council when this is all over. Next one, please. And as part of the recommendations, we have really three tier of recommendation. One that they want to happen right now, which is for the, for the power company to replace all the existing streetlighting when they are not working. Because Graystone operates a little bit different from Georgia Power. Georgia Power, when something goes bad, they will go and replace it at the same time. Graystone, they have, they have like a, an action plan. They do it by section, you know? One, six months, they will go and replace all the lights in that section. But Georgia Power, when they go back, that's when they replace it at the same time. So they use a different approach. Next one, please. In terms of the streetlight priorities, based on what the recommendation of the consultant, they thinks that the best thing to do right now is to invest, is to improve our intersections, because a lot of intersection of local roads and, 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 uh, minor and, and major arteries are in bad shape. That would be the best way to invest the money in the short term. And in the short term, they're talking about year one to year five. And.
Who said that?
Right.
Who said, who recommended that?
The consultant.
I bet they did.
Yeah. And, and again, we can, we can have a dialogue after, after this, yes, yes. Yes, next one. And these are, these are the breakdown of the intersection by districts and, and so on. And on the next slide, you will see the investments in terms of, and, and also, this is the first, the first one is the intersection. At the same time, there are areas that we have, for example, in Public Works, we know that we, we are facing illegal dumping all the time, and we should concentrate our, our, our investment also looking at illegal dumping sites, and those are some examples of the sites where we, they, they feel like that would be a good idea. You're looking at Campbell, Campbell Drive, this is in district, uh, Form, uh, Spring Street, Oakley Road, Stax Road, and so on. Those are just some examples. On the next, eh, same thing on the next slide, some areas that they take in the short term, we should invest, we should focus our investment, which is area that, that are known for crime. An example of, of one is Maru River Road and Gooseville Highway. That's, that's an example on the bottom. And again, what I will do tomorrow, in addition to the policies, I'm going to email you, I'm going to send you a link of the whole report. It's about three hundred, four hundred pages, so that should be enough to keep you busy for a while.
Okay.
Next one, please. And again, eh, eh, another short term recommendation is to look at light, the streetlight at schools and also the parks, like Burger Parks, Three Oak Parks, and, and so on. Next one, please. And during the public meetings, those are the recommendations that we receive from the public and the stakeholders. Some, some corridors that they believe that should be, that we should focus our attention in the short term. You're looking at motor highways, from Hotel Road, Van Diver Road, West Tops, and again, those are some examples. On, on, you have the full list on the, when I email you the, the report, you will see the, the full list. And if you want to break down the short term recommendations by year, as I mentioned earlier, we're looking at the first five years, and this is the number of projects per year. And, and again, you, eh, when, when you see the report, you'll be able to go to every single dot. You'll be able to see the description, what's the recommendation for every, for every project. And I do believe they also have this in the G I S format on the mapping. I'll do my best to email you the link, so you can actually go on, uh, on the map, click it, and, and, and you see the actual project. That will save you some time. Yes. And in terms of the long-term recommendations, which is year six to fifteen, the focus will be on pedestrian and driver safety, crime reduction, and, 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 and so on. And, and, and the, that's fine, wait, next one, please. And again, this is the breakdown of the recommendations in terms of projects per year. As you can see, year six will be twenty-eight projects, year seven, twenty, and, and so on. Next one. Now, when, when we went before council, one thing that wasn't included in the, in the R F P, it was solar, to look really at solar lighting. Although we instructed the consultant to look at the latest technology, when we met with the city council, they wanted us to look at solar lighting. If, for example, we can do a pilot program somewhere, like using it in a park or an area, to see that in the future, if we can apply it throughout the city. And currently, we are, we are, it's public works out, we are working with a consultant, we're looking at doing a pilot program in, in a city park. And also, you probably noticed that we're doing a lot of roundabouts throughout the city, and this is another area that we think, if, when we do the roundabouts and we put lights inside the roundabouts, if we go solar, we realize that in the long term, we'd be saving a lot of money. So this is, we're currently looking at those two situations. And before we go before council, this is one thing we would like to have some data, something we can share with council, because this is one of the things that they're going to have to decide on. Now, this, this is a very sensitive issue. This is just suggestions, because somebody eventually has to pay for it. Because on average, every week, we receive five, six, seven requests, I need a streetlight here, I need a streetlight there. So this is costing the city money. So eventually, there has to be a way to pay for all these things. As I said earlier, we have a budget of one point four million. So this year is a little bit higher, because this year we have the Fulton Industry area, so we had to have a bigger budget. It's costing the city a lot, a lot of money. And the infra, infrastructure is aging, so we need to, to invest more money. So somebody has to pay for it, and this is some of the suggestion that we're going to bring before council, to look at the splash funds, to, to look at the increase, the property taxes, the mileage rate to pay for it, to look at the special service district, and to look at development fees. And lastly, um, in public, in Public Works, eh, I don't know if you know that, the city passed a referendum, but then it was Fulton County that we have a T S plus. And when we do a project, we set aside money for utilities for that project. And this is money sometimes we have access to, to put the streetlights in, in, in the, so this is kind of a saving. So when we, when we go after for funding, go something that this is the money we use to, to install the lights. Same thing, next one, please. And that's where you come. The streetlight policies, this is very important, for two reasons. When, and, and this is a decision, this is where we really need your comments, your, your, your guidance. And this applies to new requests, for example, whether it's a, is a single request, I, I need a streetlight in my corner, I can see there's a lot of, you know, whatever, illegal activities and whatever, or inside of the subdivision. Because now, when we were in Fulton County, there was, in part of the ordinance that, once a subdivision is like, I believe either fifty percent or two thirds, a people, they can turn it, they can send a request to the city to take ownership of the lights. And this is something we, we get involved all the time, you know, I, I would like for you guys to take over my lights, blah, blah, blah. We cannot afford to do that. And eventually, this, the council has to make a decision. Because if we decide to take over all the streetlights in subdivisions, uh, we beg for the city. We cannot afford to do that. Unless there's a funding mechanism somewhere to, to, to address all this stuff. But, but that's one. The other one in terms of, of the, the design, currently, eh, between hundred feet, they have, eh, there's, the poles cannot be low, no more than three hundred feet on, on non-state road. But on state road, they have to be one fifty. So all these things, this, those, all those numbers, you will see them in the report. And it's up to you guys to make a decision whether you feel this is, this is adequate or not. So the streetlight policy, when you receive it, we really count on your guidance and decisions on how to proceed. And because this is the things that the council is going to have to, to decide on. Next one. Same thing. And again, as I said, eh, 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 the policies apply to existing one, to new requests, and also, when, when there's a need to innovate or to upgrade the system. So you're going to have to look at everything and, and make a combination. Next one. Next one, please. And we did, we, as, as I said earlier, we had two public meetings, and we presented that, those recommendations to the public, and those are the feedbacks I've received. Eh, 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 in summary, everybody were very supportive of the decisions, and they feel like it's, it's, the plan is good, the way it is, so, uh, we have one key milestone, which is the planning commission, and then we take it before council for the final decision. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
Now, as I said, eh, everybody's baby, so set aside two weeks to read. Any more questions for me?
Yeah, there's any comments in the.
Yeah.
Somebody wants to do a summary for us.
That's, eh, that's a two-page summary at the beginning of, of the report. I think that should do it. Yes, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Very thorough. Got meeting dates, staff training.
So I'm going to pass out the schedule. It was approved last night at city council for the meeting dates. I would be remiss if I didn't say that I am, I was pushing. I, I was pushing, and I'll email that to you. I was pushing to push out our planning commission meetings, because, you know, you can look at the packets tonight. Um, since I've been here in May, I noticed that we repeatedly get staff reports where we have no comments from departments. And then at the same time, I have spent, just this past week, I had six community meetings. Two of the meetings were to discuss subdivisions that have been built, that have had problems related to construction of homes, townhomes, but then overall development of project sites. Um, and part of that is the result of not having all the input from all the departments. So I'll just kind of give you a rundown. And I'll start with the agencies outside. There are times when we have to consult with Georgia D O T. There are times when we have to consult with E P D for environmental. There are times when we need to consult with the State Erosion Control Agency. In every project, since we don't provide water, we have to consult with City of Atlanta, because we get the water from Atlanta, as you know. And then for sewer, we have to consult with Fulton County. So, um, as you look through some of these planning cases, you see no comment, no comment, no comment, no comment from those agencies. So then when we look internally, we have some of the same issues. So we sometimes, oftentimes, won't get comments from Public Works or Transportation, um, in some cases, fire, police. And it just doesn't make for well-planned communities from my perspective, so. My push wasn't received. My push was to push out our meetings, because the issue is, like with our rezoning cases, they come to you within a month of it being filed. Month and a half being filed. And some of these are major cases. And so as you all have known, that we've had to defer a number of cases. And we defer them because we're still trying to understand the development project and we're still trying to anticipate.
You can't hold them up, can you?
I can, Commissioner Hadley, but the problem is, when you go public with that schedule, the developers want to get on that next agenda. All right, I mean, they just want to get on the next agenda. The community wants to be there. And so, you know, my push is, we looked at cities and counties across Georgia. We have the, the quickest turnaround for rezoning gains. No other city compares. There may have been one other city that had like this, two and a half months, and you're already in city council.
Similar, sorry. Anything similar to our size?
Mm-hmm. And then some that are not as big as us will have something like three week, three months, three and a half months. But it gives staff, it gives a developer, it gives a community, it gives the planning commissioners time to really digest the project. Because some of you, as, and I've had other planning commissioners that do this, you guys want to drive to the site to kind of see what's going on. And it doesn't afford you a lot of opportunity, because if they found, for instance, if they're filing this month, we will potentially have our planning commission next month.
Mm-hmm.
And it just doesn't afford all of the entities involved, from the community to the departments, to the commissioners, to staff, to put everything together. So we shall see kind of how this plays out. Um, but, we want, that, that schedule has been approved. So right now, we have the meeting as it was scheduled before, every fourth Wednesday of the month. I hope it was every fourth Wednesday.
It is.
With the exception of June, council is recessing, so we were going to offer you a recess. And then that last, those last two months, in November and December, we, we didn't want to tie up your holiday, so it's going to be earlier in the month. If that's okay.
So, so what was assumed?
I knew it's due in July. No. Sorry.
That's okay. We skipped June, and then we jumped to July.
Yeah.
Um, so they were like, just keep it status quo. The city manager wanted to keep it status quo, so I was like, okay, that's fine.
Well, underneath, underneath, if that arises again, just make sure you let us know, defer, because X, Y, and Z, we'll be happy to support that.
Yeah, and, and it was, is, it's less the concern of the commission, but it's more concerned of the expectations of the applicant and the community. Because when the community sees this, they're just going to naturally assume that if it's been submitted and we've had to seize the I M, that it's going to be scheduled. It's like, this project needs a lot of work.
Mm-hmm.
And it just makes it easier for us to have to not worry about trying to deal with the multiple emails and calls, trying to figure out what's kind of going on.
I appreciate you taking this look and, and then approach. So I think you're right. Um, thank you. Without further reaction.
So let's talk a little about training. Can you go online and pull up, uh, American Planning Association? So I think I told you guys that I started here. Um, I was very big, active in American Planning Association, A P A. And my goal is to, uh, make sure that, um, staff gets involved, but also the commissioners. And in fact.
We're going to ask the commissioner to send everybody over.
There is a board. Um, there is a board position for planning commission. So right now is a good time for you all, because they are, they have open enrollment or, uh, they. national conference is, um, has opened the registration. So, you know, I'm presenting it to those who are here today, I'll send out an email later to those who didn't attend. But you get the benefit of attending. So if you want to attend, the conference is going to be in Philadelphia in April, I believe. And so we have money in our training budget for conference attendance.
How many, how many days, sir?
Uh, let's see, well, twenty-four through the twenty-sixth. No, I'm sorry, that's the online, that's the online one. The in-person one is the fourth, the first and the fourth. Have you guys ever attended?
I don't.
So this, and then there are commissioners there. I mean, you have staff members there, you have consultants there, everybody that's engaged in planning, but you have commissioners there. So they have a, a commissioner's track that, yeah. So, um, let me know and, um, I will vie for, you know, to agree with you to probably go, you know, since the staff.
I would be good for us, bro. I, I, I'm not raising my hand, I'm, I'm looking into. When you say you have money for training, are you saying for, for travel and training or this training we got?
Oh, yeah, we pay for hotel and we will pay for hotel and airfare and then to the conference registration. Because in order for you all to continue to do what you do, you know, you need to get exposed to kind of how other communities are handling some of these cases and just engage with your colleagues.
Is this, this is a national conference or some sort of regional conference?
No, this is the national conference, the state, the state in Philadelphia. The state conference is always in September here in Georgia and this past year, when Marissa was here, she went, it was in Columbus. So it'll be in another city, uh, in Georgia somewhere in September. So you have the option of, if you're interested in attending this one.
When is that one?
Uh, the first through the fourth.
Uh.
April, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah. And then there's an online version that is April twenty-sixth to twenty-eighth. And I normally speak at these conferences, but I forgot, I didn't submit mine, I, I'll probably be on somebody's presentation. Um, but yeah, this is, um, this is going to be good, because we haven't had it in Philadelphia since two thousand three or four. Uh, it's been a while, so it'll be exciting. My colleague now, um, for those of you who've not seen the video, we need to upload it. Um, we had a national community planning event at Southwest Arts Center. And Angela Brooks is a good colleague of mine and she is now the new president of the American Planning Association. And so she's the first African-American woman to lead it. We've had an African-American man, but this is the first African-American woman to lead it and she is out of Chicago. So it'll be good. So if you're interested, just send me an email and then we will, you know, work with getting your travel stuff and getting you registered and all of that.
I, I just want to say, this is a, kind of off subject, but the, the event you had at the Southwest Arts Center that tried to show what's kind of in the works, that was really well, I, I've heard at least ten people just mentioned that, like, hey, I was there and, and I heard this and I heard this. So I'm saying that to say, eh, if you guys made that a, uh, annual, biannual thing, I think that would go well.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, oh, yeah, they, I mean, people.
I wanted to make it up there, that, that one that was on a private.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I sent my husband.
Yeah, exactly.
But it's, we, I, we hear people talking about it.
We're going to post the video online.
Of the whole?
Uh-huh, of the, of, because it was an interaction, it was a reception and then a program and then a reception again.
Okay. And it's online, you want to?
We're going to post, I have posted it.
So you have to say that airfare, hotel and food will be covered if we decided to go.
We have a limited number, because we need also since staff.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and I was, while you were excepted out, I was saying, those that are here now get the first, first bid.
Yeah, I, I think of it.
We start tomorrow.
And so then, we'll attend, we'll have some staff members to attend. And then we'll be recording another training probably in February or March. Um, I do get, or just on some additional topics in planning.
Sounds good.
Okay, what else is on the agenda?
Sorry.
A journey?
I'm sorry.
Attention, attention.
That's it, I will entertain emotions.
Yeah, that, that's a, that's a good one.
Oh.
We cut it close today.
Oh, yeah, no, it was, it was fine, I think, you know, and, and it's going to happen, it's not a, it's going to happen. The thing about it is, today's cases were all the cases from twenty twenty-two, so we've heard everything.
So now it's clear that that's.
It's clear. Now y'all have some, we have some new ones coming up next month. Which again, it's, they're just like coming, it's a, um, uh, a a Valvoline chain gas station.
I mean, that would be, yeah, all chain station in, uh, Chick-fil-A.
And a Chick-fil-A, Districts Six and District Three.
Okay.
She keeps saying Valvoline, I was like.
I keep thinking it's a gas station.
But it's a, it's a, the changer oil.
Right, and it's in the shopping center, either with, with L A, in L A Fitness Shopping Center, along Old National.
Oh, yeah, 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 I know where you're coming from.
So, and then they'll, they will also have a Chipotle in that, over in that location as well.
Oh, that's nice, I like that.
And then, yeah.
That's good, right?
Yeah, so, yeah. So that's it.
Okay.
I move, we adjourned?
As far as students on the road.
We're going to take this whole time? Get the good thing off the whole time, bro. I have a question for people.
Commissioner Haley?
No, no, this is about to be on camera.
Oh, no, it's still recording, I didn't stop it yet.
You can stop it.
Okay.